I'd like to call the Monday, August 5, 2019 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Before we begin, I would like to have a moment of silence in honor of the victims of the shootings in both Dayton and El Paso, if you will join with that. Thank you. Thank you. Would you please rise and join us with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please? Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here.
And may I have a report on the minutes of our July 15 regular session, work session, and executive session. Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all three meetings, and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So ordered. Under status reports, I have a couple proclamations I would like to read. The first status report I have is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, whereas this year approximately 175,000 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone. One man every 3.2 minutes, and roughly 32,000 will die this year from the disease, 87 men every day. Whereas in Ohio, an estimated 5,300 new cases of prostate cancer and an estimated 1,130 deaths will occur in 2019. Whereas men with relatives, father, brother, son, with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease, and whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer in American men and the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths. Whereas veterans who are exposed to chemicals and herbicides are at an increased risk for developing prostate cancer, and whereas 1 in 9 American men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are 1.7 times more likely to be diagnosed with and 2.3 times more likely to die from prostate cancer. Whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preserving and protecting families, whereas nearly 3 million men in the United States are living with prostate cancer, and that number is estimated to reach 4 million by 2024. Whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, we encourage the citizens of Oakwood to recognize the importance of prostate screenings. Now therefore, under the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, hereby proclaim September 2019 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Oakwood. This is a personal concern to me. One of my fathers currently going through prostate cancer, and so far his diagnosis is good, and so I'm keeping my fingers crossed. We also have, I think, Jim Ober, where are you, Jim? Jim is a five-year prostate cancer survivor, so congratulations to you, sir. My next proclamation is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of suicide prevention resources available to us and our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas according to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. Whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 34. And whereas the City of Oakwood is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community in simply being available to one another. Whereas one in, whoops, I'm sorry. Whereas local organizations like the Suicide Prevention Center and national organizations like the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of the battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo a topic to speak on. Whereas every member of our community should understand that through life's struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Whereas residents are encouraged to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few weeks and days, and to generally convey the appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long ways towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Whereas the sixth annual Out of the Darkness Dayton Walk in connection with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention will take place at 1:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 20, at the Oakwood High School. The 2018 event had over 1,500 participants and raised over $55,000. Now therefore, under the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Thank you for that. Under our visitors' portion of meeting, we have two main issues here tonight. We have a public hearing regarding Point Oakwood, and then we also have some legislation regarding short-term rentals. If you are going to want to speak about the Point Oakwood public hearing, we will have a time for that when you can speak. And then if you also want to speak on the short-term rentals issue before council, we will have a second visitors' section for people to speak on that topic as well. If you have any other topic that you wish to address city council on, now would be the time for you to come and address council, and I would encourage you to come down and state your name and address for the record, and we will welcome you. And it seems like everyone here wants to talk about the first two topics. Okay. So we will dispose with the visitors' section, and we will go first to legislation, and that is, I have the first item, and it is a resolution to grant partial approval of an amendment to the master plan for the Sugar Camp and Point Oakwood development affecting signage for the Element Oakwood condominiums at 30310 Old River Trail. This resolution would amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood master plan to allow for the installation and signage at the Element Oakwood condominiums. The developer has proposed a total of four signs, including one wall-mounted sign on 300 Old River Trail, one wall-mounted sign on 310 Old River Trail, one monument sign in front of 300 Old River Trail adjacent to the driveway entrance to Element Oakwood, and one monument sign in the landscaping island at the intersection of Old River Trail and Ascent Circle. This development is in the multi-use special planning zoning district. This is a special zoning district that was created in the waning years of NCR's ownership of the Sugar Camp property, written to maximize local control over the redevelopment of the site. Regulations for the district are sparse but strict, requiring almost all development to be done via public hearings and special use permit. When council approved the original master plan in 2007, signage needs for the development were not yet known, and the Element Oakwood condominiums did not yet exist. The only master plan provision related to signage authorized city staff to review and approve signs for the three entrances to the development, which occurred over a decade ago. Construction of the Element Oakwood condominiums is rapidly progressing, and the developer is here tonight to be heard on application 19-4, which seeks approval of signage for the condos. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on application 19-4 on July 3, 2019. By a vote of 4 to 0, with one member recusing himself, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the first three signs, but declined to recommend approval of the monument sign at the intersection of Old River Trail and Ascent Circle. The matter is now before council on that recommendation, and tonight we will hold our own public hearing on the application. I am introducing this resolution to, quote, "to approve in part and deny in part," unquote, based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. However, council is required to hold a public hearing on this proposal and is not prejudge the matter. At the conclusion of the hearing, we may vote to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation, or we may approve the application in its entirety, approve it with conditions, or deny it altogether. If council decides to approve in part and deny in part, as recommended by the Planning Commission, we will adopt the resolution as is. If we decide to adopt the recommendation with additional conditions imposed by council, there is space provided on the document to write them in tonight. In the event we deny the application altogether or otherwise depart from the Planning Commission's recommendation, I will withdraw the resolution as written and ask the law director to prepare legislation consistent with council's decision to be adopted at our next regular meeting in September. So as a formality, before we begin the public hearing, I move that council adopt this resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. At this point, Ethan Kroger will now present a staff report, and following our staff report, anyone who wishes to testify will come down to the podium and be sworn in en masse by our law director. Councilmember Byington, you have a comment?
Yeah. As I did during the Planning Commission, I have to recuse myself, as I live directly across the street from this piece of property and under advisement of city attorney. So
Thank you very much.
I will ask to stay at the dais, though, if that is...
Okay, that will be fine. Ethan Kroger, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
We look forward to your report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just one application before you tonight, which is application 19-4. The applicant is Jim Ober on behalf of Element Oakwood LLC. The location, 30310 Old River Trail and Lot 4014 at the intersection of Ascent Circle and Old River Trail. The nature of the quest is to install two wall-mounted signs, one on 300 and one on 310 Old River Trail, a monument sign in front of 300 Old River Trail, and a neighborhood monument sign at the intersection of Ascent Circle and Old River Trail. Now, this specific property or development is located in a multi-use special planning district. Properties within the multi-use special planning district are not subject to the signed regulations of the zoning code. Signs in the multi-use special planning district are to be evaluated against the special use standards set forth in 104.6. In 2017, approval was given to build 84 condominium units and subsequently the construction of two condominium buildings separated by a common area to include a swimming pool, a leasing sale center, a fitness area, and a rooftop deck. Now, while many topics were covered in a meeting that lasted in the early hours of the morning, one of the topics that was not covered was signage. In 2007, the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood master plan was approved. Now, this allowed staff to review and approve the signage at the three main entrances leading into Sugar Camp. However, interior development signage was not included, and was understood that future signage would be addressed via amendment to the master plan. The applicant is seeking approval for the following four signs. A wall sign placed on the east building orientated towards downtown Dayton. The sign will simply read "Element" and is roughly 22 feet by 4 feet. A wall sign placed above the leasing sale center entrance, which will read "Element" and is roughly 4 feet 7 inches by 11 feet 5 inches. A monument sign located to the right of the driveway or entrance, and this sign will read "Element Oakwood" accompanied with a logo and is roughly 5 feet by 4 feet and 7 inches. The applicant is also seeking approval to replace the existing monument sign positioned in the island located at the intersection of Ascent Circle and Old River Trail, and the monument sign is approximately 6 feet by 8 feet 4 inches. The building will be lit by SCOTTS-type lighting that will be placed on the exterior of the building and will not shine directly on the signage. The monument sign located to the west of the driveway entrance will be lit using ground-mounted landscape lighting, and the same is proposed at the requested monument sign located at the intersection of Ascent Circle and Old River Trail. The applicant is planning to use materials which will complement the building features and the architecture of the development. Now, I know, ladies and gentlemen, this is a little difficult to see, and we'll see some blown-up images here in just a few minutes, but if you can follow my cursor, what we see here is this is going to be the first of the three signs that we just talked about. We have the element signage here above the building, and just to the right, we have that ground-mounted monument sign located next to the driveway or entrance, which will be roughly here in this area. And then very, very small print down at the bottom of your screen, this is the leasing or sale center clubhouse, and again, we see the element logo or the element signage here above the door. This is a close-up view from Old River Trail looking east, and again, you can see the element signs on the east building and on the leasing sale center clubhouse. Old River Trail view looking west, and right here in between the two parked cars, you can see that ground monument sign here located next to the driveway. Again, this is just a close-up artist's rendering of that ground-mounted monument sign. And this is the fourth sign that is being proposed. This is the neighborhood monument sign. Again, if you're coming off Far Hills Avenue, just so we can orientate ourselves here, and you're pulling onto Old River Trail, right where my mouse is, right where this little red dash is, would be the proposed neighborhood monument sign. And to the left of your screen there, you can see an artist's rendering. Now, this is currently, as it stands, to the right of the screen is the existing sign that's located in that island, and to the left would be what is going to be proposed. And again, this is an overlay, and I know it's a little difficult to see, but in the background, you can see the white outline. That would be to show you a comparison of the height and the width of what is currently there now, and again, what the colored sign you would see is what would be proposed. The preliminary staff findings are set forth in the written staff report, and as a planned development, approval of the application before you falls under the special use standard set forth in 104.6. The Planning Commission was responsible for making a recommendation, and city council here tonight has the final authority to act on the application. Staff recommendation. The proposed signs are reasonable in size and scale for Element Oakwood condominium development. The proposed monument entrance sign and wall-mounted signs complement the existing architecture of the development, and staff believes that special tension should be placed on the monument sign located at the intersection of Ascent Circle and Old River Trail. Staff believes that this sign constitutes an off-premise identification sign and would not be permitted in any other zoning district here in the On June, or I'm sorry, on July 3, 2019, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on application 19-4, and by a vote of 4 to 0, with one member recusing himself, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval for the first three signs, but declined to recommend approval for the monument sign located at the intersection of Old River Trail and Ascent Circle. And ladies and gentlemen, that is all I have for you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. The sign that the Planning Commission did not approve, that was replacing a sign that's already there?
That is correct.
Okay. And who actually owns that ground where that sign is proposed to be?
I believe OIG owns that ground.
OIG owns that ground?
Correct.
Okay, not Hills Development?
Correct.
Okay, so they must have some agreement that would allow that sign to be put there if we were to approve it?
That is my understanding. That's correct.
Okay.
Your Honor, I believe actually that island there is part of the common area of the development, so it's owned by the HOA as opposed to OIG itself.
I see. Okay, that makes sense to me then. And then, am I correct that staff recommended to the Planning Commission to not approve this sign?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for you. Does anyone else have any questions for Ethan? All right. This would be the time, then, that we would open the public hearing, and anyone who wishes to address council prior to council making its decision, if you could raise your hand if you want to address council on this matter, and I'm sure Jim did, and because it's considered a quasi-judicial hearing, we need to have your testimony sworn into the record, so if you would stand and our law director would give you the oath. Is there anyone else that's here to talk about this issue as well? Okay.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council this evening?
I do.
Welcome. If you can step to the podium and get to state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you.
Yeah, thank you. Jim Ober with Hills Properties, technically L&amp;L C for this application. First of all, address is 4901 Hunt Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45242. First of all, thank you so much for the proclamation on prostate cancer. Obviously, it's near and dear to me, and I will invite you all to the Gentleman's Stakes, which is another walk-run, which is September 14 at Belterra Park, the Old River Downs Racetrack downtown Cincinnati, near Coney Island. Ethan knows how to reach me. I'd be happy to talk to anybody if anybody you know has prostate cancer. I've had surgery, 33 radiation treatments.
Wow.
Been through the mill, and I'd be happy to share my experience with anybody you know, because it's unlike breast cancer, you can't walk by anything without seeing a pink ribbon. People don't talk about prostate cancer, so your proclamation means a whole lot. Zero Prostate Cancer is a group that I belong to, and it's very good. So again, I encourage you to continue this in years to come.
Thank you.
As to this case, I understand some of the thinking behind, and I guess the sign in question is the one that's on the screen right now, this sign. We were hoping that we could eliminate the existing sign that was, I don't know how long the intent was for it to be there. We thought this would be something in nature of the community and smaller in scale. This is not the end of the day, but we would like to have this as part of the approval. But more so than not, the other three signs that were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission are clearly more impactful to our community. So at your pleasure, if you find it in your hearts to say all four of them are fine, that would be wonderful. But obviously, the three that were approved by Planning Commission would be our first impetus.
Very good. Any questions for Jim?
Besides the obvious, because there's an arrow on that sign, the fourth one we're talking about, is there another need for that sign?
It's mainly for orientation. It's, again, being down on Old River Trail like it is, it is, we can't get any exposure on Far Hills, so anybody who would sight down this access road of Old River Trail and see that sign would have some context of where to go to get to our community.
Okay, because the, am I correct saying the one building is 300 Old River, and the other building is 310?
There's actually three addresses on the property. 300 is the one, correct me if I'm wrong, 300 is the one closest to Far Hills, 310 is the clubhouse building, and 320 is actually the far westerly building, but there's no signage associated with that building.
Right. So 300 and 320 are the same buildings, just...
Correct. 310 is the sandwich piece, and that just covers the name element over the doorway.
Right, right. I hadn't heard the numbers that we were using down. I knew it was Old River Trail. Okay, so that's why. Okay, so then, okay, all right.
Other questions for our witness? All right. Well, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
If no one else wishes to address council on this matter, we will close the public hearing and begin our... Oh, well, you need to be sworn in before you come and address council, so would you give her the oath, please?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council?
Yes, sir.
May you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Kara Kite, 338 Volusia, Oakwood. I'm sorry to hear about your father, and I'll keep him in my prayers, and congratulations, sir, on your remission. I don't live in the point, but I live in the community, and I just, that sign sticks out to me. It doesn't look like it fits in Oakwood, and I think, I don't think it's necessary at that corner. I think that's why we have GPS and apps on our phone to tell us where to go. But to me, the signage, it just doesn't fit the feel of our community, so if it were to be allowed, I think it needs to have maybe a different look. It just seems to stick out. So that's just my opinion. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, but I wanted to share mine. Thank you.
Very much. I mean, it appears as though this sign is, in fact, smaller than the existing sign. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, last chance before I close the public hearing. Anyone else wish to address council on this matter? All right, thank you. We will then close the public hearing and begin our deliberations. Councilmember Epley, do you have any concerns, questions?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilmember Hilton?
No, I don't, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Stevens?
Just, you know, I agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation. I like the, I actually really like the size of the one that sits out in front of the driveway. The signs on the building look real nice. My first reaction to this was that the current welcome sign there, as I drive in there on a regular basis, whether that's something they wanted or not, I don't like the sign being there. I just think that having the bushes and the trees and on that tiny little, we'll call it an island, I think that's a nice piece there. So I'm, you know, I appreciate the fact they made it smaller, but I don't think a sign is necessary. The interesting about Ms. Kite standing up is the first thing I thought of with the arrow, and that's why I asked the question, was I know not everyone uses their phones to get somewhere, but the 300 and the 320, or in slash 310 if you're going to lease, that's how you're going to get there. And I also think you can see the buildings from Far Hills, so I think, I'm not sure if the sign is actually necessary. That's my opinion on that.
All right. Well, my only counter to GPS is I worked downtown at 40 North Main Street, which used to be called the Kettering Tower, is now the Strata Catch Tower, and whenever I have people from out of town that come and punch in 40 North Main Street, it takes them to Grater's in Centerville.
Which is not a bad thing. It's a good thing.
I blame Google for that. I don't blame anyone else, but be that as it may. So the motion that I introduced was essentially to approve the three signs and deny this particular sign that we're talking about. Does anyone want to deny all three signs, or does anyone want to approve all four signs of the three of you that are remaining to make your... So essentially, we're proposing to vote on my resolution that would approve the three signs and deny the fourth sign as recommended to us by both the Planning Commission and also by staff. Is my understanding correct?
That's correct.
All right. Then, hearing, if there's no other discussion on this matter, Lori, I would ask you to call the roll.
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That will conclude this matter of legislation, and Jim, I will be sure to let my father know about the, he's going to the dog track, so maybe he'll go to Belterra, too. So, all righty. So that concludes that matter. The next item on our agenda is an ordinance regarding short-term rentals. After Councilmember Byington introduces the second reading of this ordinance, we will then open it up for visitors to come down and give us your comments regarding this ordinance. I would ask the visitors, again, because this is not, this issue's not a public hearing, you don't need to be sworn in to give your testimony, and we would encourage you to spend not more than three minutes addressing council, and please address council and don't address the audience, and we look forward to that, to your comments as well. So I will then turn the dais back over to Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes, Your Honor. This is an ordinance adopting a new Section 17-801, which is "Short-Term Rentals Prohibited" of the Property Maintenance Code and making related amendments elsewhere in the Property Maintenance Code to provide for the prohibition of short-term residential rentals throughout the city. This is a second reading of an ordinance to prohibit the use of residential properties for short-term rentals, or STRs, or transient rentals, which are defined as rentals having a term of 25 consecutive calendar days or less. STR, short-term rentals, are becoming increasingly common with the proliferation of smartphone apps, online portals, and other rental-oriented services. of smartphone apps, online portals, and other rental-oriented services in the so-called gig economy. Until now, council has chosen not to regulate them, treating them no different than a traditional rental property, on the belief that existing laws can adequately address noise, littering, criminal violations, property maintenance issues, and any other problems that arise. The City of Oakwood is beginning to receive more complaints about residential properties being used for short-term rentals, and the number of Oakwood homes and rooms listed on short-term rental websites continues to increase. Council is mindful of the private property rights of each homeowner, but we are also aware that an entire neighborhood can be disrupted when a home is used to host an ever-changing cast of short-term tenants. One of council's highest priorities is to preserve and maintain Oakwood's character for our residents. This is why we have determined that short-term rentals of residential properties is inconsistent with the permanence, established character, density, and tranquility of Oakwood's residential neighborhoods, and is potentially detrimental to property values. This ordinance will prohibit short-term rentals in the city with the goal of protecting and preserving these qualities of our residential neighborhoods. Key provisions include, the ordinance only prohibits rentals having a duration of twenty-five consecutive calendar days or less. Rentals exceeding twenty-five days, such as a month-to-month or yearly leases, will still be permitted as they always have been. Generally, violations will be treated as an unclassified misdemeanor, meaning that they are subject to fines only and not a jail term. There is, however, enhancement provision for repeat offenders that can convert the offense to a fourth-degree misdemeanor, which can result in up to thirty days in jail. And to avoid causing any hardship by impacting current listings or contracts, the prohibition would not take effect until January first, two thousand and twenty. This is a second reading of this particular ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second? Second. My recollection is at the, when the initial ordinance was introduced, we had a November one effective date, and based on some comments that we did hear, we thought it was appropriate to move that date back to January one, two thousand and twenty, based on some folks that have current, ongoing advanced-
Holiday rentals.
Holiday rentals primarily. So before we vote on this matter, I would be interested in hearing comments from the citizens that have come here. And again, if you want to come down and address counsel and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. Who wants to go first? Come on down, Kate, or Gary. Okay.
Gary Leisel, one-one-four Vulcanand Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, four-five-four-one-oh. Mayor, council members, city manager. I know how difficult it is sometimes to make fair decisions that affect the community. You don't only have an obligation to the registered voters who live in Oakwood, you also have an obligation to those who may not reside in the community but who work here and pay income tax to support your government. You also have an obligation to people who own property here, where they pay eight-and-a-half percent of their property tax to support your government, and another sixty-eight percent to support your school district. You're elected to represent and make fair decisions for the majority of your citizens, not a few. This legislation regarding short-term rentals will not solve your problems. In fact, it's already created a new one. That's why we're here. I'm here for a simple ask. I'm here for a reasonable ask, and I'm here for a fair ask. Simply postpone this legislation until you are absolutely certain that you have realized all of the unintended consequences of this law. Be fair to those who are affected by it but have done nothing wrong and don't deserve to have their businesses shut down because of those who do. Regulate, don't eliminate. It's as simple as that. Come up with something else. Time is not of the essence. You've already extended this to January first. Talk to these people, understand what they're doing, and find a way to get the ne'er-do-wells out and keep the people here who are supporting Oakwood tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address? I'd like to, I'd like to talk to Kate next. Is that okay? Do I have a point of personal privilege there?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Kate Birch. I live at Eighth Spring House Road. And we have lived in our beautiful, hundred-and-three-year-old Oakwood house for thirty-five years, and have taken care of it and loved it very much. We are older now, and we are paying the very high property taxes that Mr. Leisel talked about. And three years ago, we started operating an Airbnb through, in our above-garage chauffeur's apartment. It has been a very, very wonderful experience. We have had absolutely no problems, no property damage, no theft, nothing but normal wear and tear. They have a private entrance with a keypad. They park at the top of our driveway. They have absolutely no negative impact on the community. And in fact, I think that they have a very positive impact on the community because people walk in the neighborhood, they frequent the restaurants and shops in Oakwood, and I can't tell you how many people have made comments to me about what a beautiful neighborhood we have, how much they love the character of the houses, the varied architecture, and the beautiful big trees. These people spend money here, and they give us good press. Airbnb also is run on a model that requires both hosts and guests to behave well, because we review each other on the website, and you don't get to participate unless you are a good actor. We've had, again, no noise, no problems, nothing. So I believe that we really are an asset to the community, and I'd like you to consider really dropping the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else then would like to please come down and again, state your name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Jeffrey Owens. I live at Twenty Mart Avenue, which is kind of the north side, just a stone's throw from University of Dayton. And I've lived here for about thirteen years, and I understand that, you know, certainly in the grand scheme of things, that's probably a blink of an eye to the many elder residents and people who have lived here for multi-generations. But it's been a wonderful thirteen years, and our daughter went to Oakwood School. She's actually just graduated from high school this year, and will be going on to college. And we consider Oakwood to be our home. And being on the north side of Dayton, I'm sure you've heard the stories about what goes on there. You know, one of the great challenges that we've sort of had to weather in that part of Oakwood, of course, is the proximity of the University of Dayton and the fondness of UD students to rent properties in that area. And in the thirteen years, I've been trying very hard to sort of make this into a house that is, you know, pleasant to the eye, trying to be a good neighbor, really making it a home, manifesting, I think, a lot of the values that many people who come to Oakwood are expecting when they're there. And for a few years, we did actually have to endure the students, you know, all kinds of interest and behaviors on weekends, and I think it was a regular stop for the police for a couple of years. Fortunately, our neighbor to the east has changed hands. We now have a school teacher from the Kettering District who has made it his home, and things were looking grand. Unfortunately, our neighbor to the west has just sold their property, and we have a new couple living, well, a new couple owning the property. And shortly after they bought it in January, they installed a key punch in the side door, and after, you know, being very quiet for a very long period of time, people started coming and going. And while, you know, certainly I respect the fact that, you know, people are paying very high taxes here in Oakwood, as we do ourselves, to live, in order to live here. What has happened recently is that some of the transient visitors to that house have been somewhat of a nuisance. And, you know, it's been less than a pleasant stay. When we looked on the Airbnb rental site, of course, you know, many of the guests have commented on how it's wonderful, walkable, livable, quiet neighborhood. The property is one in which, you know, they guarantee security. They ask that guests not smoke. And unfortunately, while the, it's sort of a little bit like the picture of Dorian Gray, while the amenity itself is very pleasant for guests staying, we often have to sort of deal with the other side of it. You know, for example, it's a non-smoking facility, therefore, it had forced a lot of guests to sit out in the driveway within a couple of feet of our bay window, smoking and vaping, for example. Or back in the month of, months of April and May, there was a, what I believe to be a road crew or some kind of construction crew, whose company placed in the Airbnb, and it became, once again, reminiscent of the days when the UD students were there on Friday nights. And so while, you know, certainly I don't want to begrudge anybody the right to use their property in any way that's manifestly helpful to them or useful to them, being able to support themselves, I would just ask that you think about not just simply the property owner, but also the neighbors who have to sort of deal with this transient population. Because if, you know, these kinds of manifestations become more and more common, I'm afraid I might have to maybe think twice about making Oakwood my permanent home, because, you know, if it's going to become, you know, kind of a place where transient populations are staying, probably there might be other places in the greater Dayton area where I might be able to get a little bit of peace and quiet. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to address counsel on this matter? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
My name is David Azroti. I reside at one-thirteen Bonner Street in Dayton. I am an Airbnb super host. The house I used to host was bought for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars in nineteen ninety-five, and I paid too much for it. The guests I've hosted over the last year, traveling nurses, families who sold their home and were waiting for the owners of their new home to move out, engineers at the base, a composer who wanted to retreat, woman who makes a living helping animal shelters clean up their act, UD parents here to see, visit their kids. I hosted an eighteen-year-old airman who was old enough to serve our country, but wasn't old enough to rent a hotel room in town. Not a one, has done anything but been a great neighbor, visitor. All I've learned, all of them have learned about historic South Park from my guide, and have enjoyed coffee at Ghost Light or Holy Grounds, ordered pizza from The Pizza Factory, or walked up to the South Park Tavern, enjoyed Jimmy's Ladder Eleven or Old Scratch. They've taken the flyer to see shows downtown. They've visited the Air Force Museum, the Art Institute, watched WGI. They bring money into the community. And most importantly, they've allowed me to keep my parents' things. Dad's Haywood-Wakefield chair, their Eileen Gray side table, the Alto table, things that remind me of my parents and their love of travel and discovering other cultures alive in their former house. My parents traveled the world and would have loved Airbnb over a sterile hotel experience. My father spoke five languages, my mother, too. They kept journals of their travels. I didn't even know about these until I was cleaning the house out to get ready for the Airbnb. They made lifelong friends in their journeys because of their wanderlust. Airbnb isn't the first or only service that allows this to happen. Long ago, in internet time, there was a site called Couch Surfing, where you could literally share a couch with travelers. This is in your own home. Airbnb offers extensive tools for screening guests and managing issues. They run a tight ship. But who benefits the most? Many empty nesters have found it allows them to stay in their homes, which may be bigger than they need. They also have the chance to interact with people of all kinds, like the doctor in New Orleans I stayed with when I was there to take part of the National Veterans Business Engagement Conference. Sometimes, hosts don't meet their guests, like the family who had a backyard cottage that I stayed in while visiting Bloomington for a memorial for a friend's parents. Zilling laws and rules about who could do what have been used in this community before for xenophobic reasons. My friend Rabbi Mengele couldn't buy a home in Oakwood in the sixties. Just remember that before you choose another way of restricting property rights in the name of protection of some value you come up with. My office was a former corner grocery in Dayton. We don't have corner groceries anymore, sadly, and the building was ready for the wrecking ball in nineteen eighty-eight. I bought it for twenty-two hundred dollars and was told I'd need a conditional use permit to have a small ad agency. The city fought me with rules like the one you are about to enact. Over the course of the last thirty-three years, many vendors, clients, and some of the top people in my field have visited a place that they never would have. A few ended up buying homes because they fell in love with the neighborhood. Others walked away with a positive impression of South Park. Oakwood doesn't have any hotels. You barely have a place to grab coffee, lunch, or a drink. While you believe that living under a dome is wonderful, sometimes a little cultural cross-pollination can go a long way to growing your community, not harming it. There are other ways to manage these wonderful additions to your community other than banning them. I suggest you table this and learn more about alternatives before you act without thinking big picture. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Azroti? All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Who else would like to address counsel at this time? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Ashley, and this is Emily. We're the webs, and we live three-twenty-one South Bronfield in Kettering. We operate DaytonHospitality.com. Check it out. It's on the web. You can actually rent our two apartments directly from the web, through Airbnb and other platforms. And the reason we're here today is because we're concerned about a precedent that it's very easy, having sat on the Kettering Council, it's a lot easier to come up with changes when other folks in the area, especially people you know and trust, have decided to make changes in their communities. And we're concerned that the changes that you're enacting could potentially be enacted in Kettering or Dayton. So Kettering, where we live, Dayton, where we have the Airbnb properties. We've also been friends with Roger and Kate for many years, and see ourselves being in their shoes someday, having a big house with no kids in it anymore. We have two adult, two of our adult, we have three adult children, but two of them are at home right now, and we don't expect that to happen forever. So she's sad about that. I'm looking forward to it. So one of the things that we, we found about Airbnb from trying to find options, we took a vacation out west. We had an exchange shoot from Bosnia, and we had never taken a vacation out west. So I guess three years ago at this point, we packed up the day after graduation from high school. We got rented a big van, took our three kids, Emily and I, and Armin from Bosnia, and we went west. We drove all night, experienced one of the greatest things ever, which is one of your, when one of your adult children can drive through Kansas while you sleep. It was great. And we showed up, and we stayed in Airbnb. It turned out to be right down the street from some Army friends that we had, and it was a great experience. That was the first of probably about six or seven places that we stayed Airbnb. But the whole trip, except for one hotel stay, was all Airbnb. We met some great people. It was so awesome to be able to get into the middle of the community. And one of the things I, I know I'm not supposed to question counsel, but has anybody stayed in Airbnb from counsel? Okay. Any of you-
My son has.
Any of you that want to, if you, if you take up Gary on his suggestion and think about this a little bit, any one of you is welcome to come stay free of charge overnight in our place. We'll set you up. You can come down, check it out. Because we hope you love it, and you tell your friends, and when you have people come visit, we're right inside Dayton, and we're close to Oakwood. And so anyway, we get to be a part of these communities. I mean, we've stayed in Airbnbs in, it's north, north of Manhattan. It's like the northern, northern part of Manhattan. I forget the name of the neighborhood. But anyway, it was great. You get up in the morning, you walk downstairs, you take three steps, and there's a little, what do they call them, bodegas?
Bodega.
Yeah, there's a bodega there, and you get coffee, and you talk to the guy. By the third day, he's like, hey, Ashley, what's up, man? It was great to be a part of that. Then we got to experience it going overseas. And so we went to Europe to visit Armin, but because of airfares, we found a cheap ticket to Zurich, and we made our way, the long way around to get to Bosnia, and we stayed again in four or five different Airbnbs. Got to be right immersed in the culture. And Oakwood is neat. And David, I love you, fellow paratrooper, but sometimes you try to make your part, your point, and you make it worse. Look, I get, I get the bubble thing, but Oakwood's a great neighborhood. We don't live far. We're right down Far Hills a little bit. We love your stores. We love to come up to Dorothy Lane Market. We get coffee in Oakwood at Starbucks. I mean, you have a great, you have a great thing going on here. And Airbnb done properly is an opportunity for people to get immersed in that and kind of be a part of it. And it's also, you know, family's a big deal here. I know that. You talk about your walkable neighborhood, people know people. This is an opportunity, Airbnb done right is an opportunity for when family comes to visit, that there's a place to stay as opposed to a hotel that's way outside of town. Just a couple of things, real quick. Military families, we have gotten, matter of fact, today, we had a call from a military family. Their house isn't going to be ready for ten days. They need a place to stay. Their choices are go to a hotel and be in a small hotel room, maybe, maybe have- Their choices are go to a hotel and be in a small hotel room, maybe, maybe have a mini fridge. If they're lucky, they could find a suite someplace. But they're able to come in and stay in a one-bedroom apartment. It's fully furnished. They've got a separate bedroom. The, the living room makes into a couch. They've got a full kitchen. They've got laundry. It's all there. And if, and that's, that's the kind of place that Roger and Kate have. I mean, that's the kind of place that they have. And is it Mark? Mark? That's, anyway. Mark?
Ashley, you've forgotten how to address counsel.
I totally get, sorry, but I totally get where Mark is coming from, and it's our worst fear as a host, to have somebody in that's not going to take care of our place. So Airbnb has had some great things in place. We can set some rules, and we can ask for quiet time, and we can do certain things. And what would be great, this could, this whole thing could be turned around where Airbnb hosts could be your biggest fans, is if you do what Mayor Lightzel is suggesting, that you look at it and you come up with a way to do some regulation, like if you, if the law was behind the fact that we only allow four occupants in our Airbnb, that would be great. Because then if there was an issue, we could actually say, it's not, we're not going to discuss it. If I call the police, they're going to enforce the law, and we've set a maximum occupancy and you're going to have to abide by it. I apologize for going on so long. I guess the, the biggest thing that I'm asking is what Gary has asked, and that is that you all think about it, that you don't force the host while you're, while you're looking at it closer, to shut, shut down their sites and not take reservations and potentially lose their super host status. It is technically a business, but for a lot of people, it's also a fun way to connect with people from all over the place. And nobody, nobody wants to put up with somebody that's going to cause problems. And so if there's some way to figure out how to mitigate the problems, yet enjoy the benefits of inviting people and giving them a place to stay in the community, we really appreciate you guys looking at, figuring out how to do that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Who else would like to address counsel? Come on up. We've got plenty of time, so we'll, we'll listen to every one of you.
So hello.
Hi.
Honorable Mayor Duncan. I'm Michael Brant. I'm, I live in Kettering. I own two Airbnbs, three on the way, and we're working on one. I got started in Airbnb when I went to Barcelona with family and fell in love with the opportunity of staying locally. And I did everything that's said here to include, if you extend to look out for this, why don't you come and look at my Airbnb if you want to stay in it? Same with what Ashley said, you can stay for free for a night, and you can see and experience what an Airbnb is like. I really think you need to investigate further and understand how this impacts your community and how we have helped enable your community to grow. For example, I had a guest stay with me, and she said, hey, where do I get ice cream? And I said, Grater's Ice Cream, and Oakwood has the best ice cream. And sure enough, she texted back, said, what a great recommendation. We are helping your businesses by bringing people into the community to go eat at Flyboy's. Hey, I own the Aviator. I push for the Flyboy's restaurant. Go get a great beer, go check it out. Oakwood is a great place. So, best Airbnb we ever stayed at. The Aviator Mongoloo is incredibly charming, comfortable, and clean. It's a perfect place for families. The layout is great. There are many kid amenities, toys, games, books, plates, and silverware, a high chair, an awesome cot, and a wonderful park for kids to step away, not to mention a trail system for running just up the road that was really pretty and well-marked. The beds, including the couch bed, was really comfortable and the sheets were soft. Michael and Maria went their extra mile washing the linens in unsated detergent since my family was sensitive to chemicals. Thank you again, guys. What a sweet spot. We really so pleased and felt relaxed and really enjoy our stay. That's one of a hundred-plus Airbnb comments that I've had on my site. So please, again, do your investigation, look at, I think what Ashley just said, this will, if you enable the right laws and effects, I don't want bad people to stay, right? It's my property. I want good people to stay. And Airbnb has a lot of great things to set up. I only advertise on Airbnb. Thank you for your time.
Where is your property?
Mine is in Kettering and Dayton, not in Oakwood. But I sent them, I sent them to Oakwood.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for your comments. Who else, please come down?
Your honor, before they begin, only because it's been mentioned twice, I feel the need to throw this in there. Please don't offer counsel free stays in your Airbnbs because of the Ohio Ethics Law. If they're going to stay, they need to pay full price.
My understanding of that is we are paid so little amount of money that we are not required to fill out gift forms with the Ohio Ethics Commission. But that said-
That's not true.
That's not, but I, thanks for the free offer, but we, we will pay if we choose to do that.
Yeah, I'm an Air Force civilian, so I know that's the whole eight-dollar or less rule with ethics, so it's like I totally get where you come from. So my name is Jeremy Gwinup.
Jeremy?
Gwinup. I live on 447 Volusia Avenue.
Okay.
Actually, you came through our house on the-
Yes, on the tour.
Holiday tour, so I appreciate you having to. I heard a lot of good stories about people with Airbnbs tonight, all very positive stuff. It's also been inspiring to hear Kate's story about being able to turn space over her garage into like an, basically a source of income. It's also great that she's located on the property, so she can supervise the property when it's being run in. All right, so the house next to ours, I want to say it was a 441. Recently changed hands because, just because of the former owner, she needed downsized. I think she basically just consolidated and lived in the Oregon District. She wound up selling the property to a young entrepreneurial couple who have since turned it into an Airbnb. So then they did a wonderful job renovating the house. I've actually met them and their infant daughter, and I talked to them, you know, while they're in the process of renovating this house. It's like, oh, I was like, you know, I said to them, oh, welcome to the neighborhood. It's like, you know, this is a great neighborhood for kids. Because if you know anything about Volusia, all up and down, it's, it's kid central. I mean, on the block parties, you kind of have to watch out for the packs of bikes riding up and down because there's so many kids there. And so the thing is, you know, this couple who own a, basically an improvement group, I think they're in the process of moving to offices downtown Dayton, so a great downtown-based business, but they turned this property next to us into an Airbnb. They did, and again, they're trying to target a fairly well-off clientele, I mean, tried to do their best of their ability to basically keep it in keeping with the, you know, basically the character of the neighborhood. And I've had, they've had a series of guests, and for the most part, it's all been, you know, pretty easy, you know, like, you know, very little interaction, very little noise. But the question is, what happens when it doesn't go well and there's a misunderstanding? Okay, so I was away on business over this, not this past weekend, but the weekend previous. And the property had guests over, and they were having a party well into the night, two, three in the morning. Unfortunately, the police were called because of the noise, but I believe that the, attempting to follow up, like the burden of proof for a noise complaint was not met, and we had to do that a couple of times over that weekend. And I'm trying to fix this for my wife while I'm forty-five hundred miles away on business. Okay, so we have five kids. Okay, you know, they're, granted, teenagers, two grade schoolers going to Harmon. So is it really incumbent on my wife to try to fix the property owner's problem when they're not there? I mean, it's a standalone Airbnb. It is a business in a residential community. And I know that some people, yeah, it is a nice source of income, I don't begrudge that. Or, you know, it's like in other neighborhoods, maybe it's a better fit. And then I don't want to be accused of not my backyard-ism, but I do want to say for all these glowing testimonials so far, which are very possible, I have stayed in an Airbnb, and I have greatly enjoyed it. But the question is, does it fit? All right, so that's why, you know, I'm glad counsel is considering this legislation tonight, and I really hope that this ordinance is approved, even though there may be smarts to it that people disagree with it. Because at least at some point, we can always amend the legislation to address things as they come up, because unfortunately, maybe there's just parts of Airbnb, like the, like the reservation mechanisms that just don't solve all the problems. Because yes, while the technology is great, there, you know, it doesn't solve all the problems. And, you know, again, thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Who else would like to address counsel? Please come down and state your, yes, you in the front. If you can, state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Cool Lorenz. I reside at 114 Vulcanan Avenue. I do have an Airbnb on Wayne Avenue, which is 2016. I am also a super host, and I want to share with you Airbnb's goal. Airbnb is not a platform for transient people. There's really no such thing as transient vacationers. My vacationing, I don't want to be called a transient. We are a community. We're a community of international people who believe in creating a unique environment for travelers, adventurers, and families. We strive to make a home anywhere in the world for people who are traveling away from their home, so when they stay at ours, they feel like they're at home. Ours is called Helen's House, named after a neighbor who had passed away at the age of ninety-four, and she had lived there her whole life. I can't count the number of ways that our guests, when they stay, they said, oh, my gosh, this is like going back to grandma's house. And that makes me feel so great, because it is. It is a step back in time, and we have antiques, and we do it as in memory of Helen. My family has used Airbnb on international travel and on, and within the country. We have stayed in Spain, we have stayed in England, we have done our travels to Maine. I'm trying to think of all our travels, Canada. So we have used Airbnb, sorry, we have used Airbnb on international, international level. We are super hosts, and we are very proud of our community and our surrounding community. As super host, as host, we are held and rated to a very high standards. I'll discuss that in just a second. Our guests are families who come to spend Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Years with their loved ones, with their loved ones and here in the county. Our guests are loving parents who come across the country to visit their students at the University of Dayton. Councilman Uplie, I believe you're a graduate of the, of the university, I think you can greatly appreciate-
Of the law school.
Of the law school. Okay, of the law school. We've got families who are coming over and spending some great times with their students. Currently, right now, we have a mom and a dad from India who is spending time with their daughter who is pursuing a master's degree there at University of Dayton, and this is their first time in the United States. So we're very proud that they're staying at Helen's House. We have guests who are coming in to visit the United States Air Force Museum. They visit the Hamvention, the Winter Guard International. They come to attend a rock concert there at the, in Hebrew Heights at the Music Center. When these guests come to our area, they come with their wallets, and they are spending money. As host of Airbnb, we have a manual. And in that manual, we recommend restaurants, bars, coffee houses, tea houses, museums, parks. In our manual, we suggest they go visit Dorothy Lane Market for killer brownies. We also suggest they go to Grater's for the ice cream. We suggest that they go visit the Texas Beef and Cattle, Texas Beef and Cattle, which I'm a co-member of, I believe. Councilman, you're also a co-member of Texas Beef and Cattle. If you have a plug for them, great, great barbecue beef. But we, we recommend that they come and visit these businesses. These worldwide visitors and hosts, we're not threatening the comfort or safety or welfare of neighborhoods or citizens. Short-term rentals in and of themselves are not causing harm, nor is long-term rentals. What we need to consider is the behavior of the landlords and the renters. That can determine any detrimental qualities. With Airbnb, both the host and the guest are rated. As a guest, if I offer a trashy home, an unsafe home, I am going to receive a very bad review. And this review is on the site. Everyone and anyone can see this review. And if this is kept up, if I keep receiving these reviews, I will lose my status as a super host, and I will eventually be kicked off of Airbnb. As a guest, if you are causing noise, you're disregarding the policies that I have set up, that you are not to make any noise between this time and this time. If you are not parking in the right spot, if you're not following what you're supposed to be following, I will leave you a bad review, which is also open to everyone on that site, and you will find it very difficult to find a place anywhere else with Airbnb. So we are, we are rated. We self-regulate ourselves on this platform. Here's a review from a guest who stayed at one of your Oakwood homes. This is not a review of mine. I did pick a, a review of a Oakwood Airbnb. This is a Airbnb. I don't know if Leah is here. This is her review. This is the review of her place. "This place is fantastic, very clean, and has a wonderful decor. Every detail was thought of, very close to shopping in grocery stores. Oakwood is an outstanding community and very safe." Leah, who is the guest, excuse me, the host, was extremely attentive to our needs, and her response time was swift. She was wonderful to work with, and we would stay again. I highly recommend Leah's place in Oakwood. Is this not the way you want Oakwood to shine? Do you really want to close the doors to these families, these business owners, these adventurers? Do you want to shut down these businesses, these Airbnb businesses in your community? I respectfully ask you, please, consider the path you are taking. Take time to study the situation, develop a more equitable and feasible plan. This current legislation may or may not solve your problem, and I understand fully the problem. I live in Dayton, I understand it. However, it will kill your Airbnb folks. They will become the unintended victims of this current proposal. I'm not going to invite you to stay in my Airbnb for free. No, I wrote here, I will invite you to tour my Airbnb, Helen's House. I will ask you to ask any questions you like. I have been doing this since June of two thousand and sixteen. I think you will find that the Airbnb community truly just wants to make our neighborhoods a lovelier and better place. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to address counsel at this time? Please come down and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Evan Kaufman of 3328 Sagamon Avenue, right over next to the Fries in Kettering. I think definitely after hearing folks talk about the longevity of how long people have been here, I've probably been here the shortest amount of timeframe. The Air Force sent me here in two thousand and thirteen, so I definitely know that I'm a little less than a blink of an eye. But during that time, I think when I hear arguments for both sides, I found myself in a bit of a predicament that doesn't quite fit maybe on either end of the spectrum. So as I could tell by some of the discussion here, and just by looking at some haircuts in the room, I can tell there've been a lot of folks that have served and have been in the military or been moving around from base to base. Now, when I got here back in two thousand and thirteen, I was put in what you call a temporary living facility, temporary situation for me and my family for almost six to eight weeks while I was here. And that was for me to close on my home while we were over in Beaver Creek. And anyways, during that situation, I'm sure there are quite a few folks who have been in a situation where you're not there for a short term, but you're not there for long term. So when you're there for a short term, there's only so, I guess just to say, so far a microwave can really go when you're living in a place. And I've kind of determined that to be really anything over about seven to fourteen days. And if you guys have been on a long-term training of any kind, be it for a company, be it for government, military, whatever it is, you know that some things you need that are like home, and hotels can't quite provide that. So the one thing I think is very interesting about today, and we mentioned Airbnb over and over again, it's something that I'm actually not really a part of. I do mainly short-term rentals to folks who are in similar situations to where I was in. But the interesting thing that those things allow us to do is allow individuals to kind of bridge that gap from a long-term home situation where you can have access to a kitchen that's fully stocked to provide good meals, and still having the ability to be there for a short amount of time. The problem when I came here in the first place back in two thousand and thirteen is the cost. If I was put outside of the Air Force Base, which I was fortunate to get a TLF, if any of you guys have served here at Wright Patterson, you know, you got to call ahead a few months at least in advance to reserve one of the two-bedroom houses that they have on base. If you don't, you're going to be stuck off base. And in that case, if you're lucky, you'll get a non-availability slip, and then maybe they'll give you a hundred dollars a night. If you have a family of three or four kids, then in that situation, it's hard to find yourself a hotel room that will lease to you for, I should say, short term, I should say, a home that will lease to you short term that will cover your, accommodate your family, or to get a hotel that has the room, space, and amenities to support you. So that is where, for me filling in, I recently exited the Air Force back in December of two thousand and eighteen. I had got my real estate license, and the one member I think I only know here is Mr. Kroger, through your nice pre-sale inspections, he helped walk me through the finer points to better understand that. But being on the buy side in multiple transactions here, I've been able to help many folks move to the area for Oakwood. My primary focus for my clients are all military and helping them bridge that transition. My primary focus for my clients are all military, and helping them bridge that transition. And one of the things I do is I offer them the ability to stay in some of my own investment properties as a short-term rental. That way, they can bridge the gap when they move here to stay somewhere that offers their family the amenities that they need. So, when I look at this, I see, I'm hearing all tonight, the divide of just, it's focused on Airbnb, or VRBO, the short-term sites. I ask you, just also expand the mindset a bit to where there's more outside of that when we put in legislation that paints a broad stroke across why people are looking for short-term rentals. So, the one thing I wish to ask is that we strongly consider how we state what is transient and what is short-term, and also to consider putting in place, as it has been mentioned, maybe a process for allowing certain folks to be vetted and screened to provide such services. Because there are those members, there are those, I heard airmen mention for coming in, and those airmen who have a family of four or five, and I've sold them many homes before, who get stuck off base, and they can't put their whole family into a place, and they're stuck waiting for their home to close for thirty to forty days. Some of them need a short ten-to-fourteen day window to make it work. Now, I know they're going to go out, and for up to twenty-five days, I see that as a local hotel, if I looked at the rates right before this, it's going to cost them about twenty-five-hundred bucks for that month, whereas I know I can help them and make it work for less than half of that. So, I urge that we just consider a scenario where we work with folks that are in that odd gap of there for a night or two versus there forever. Twenty-five days just might be a little too, in that case, long. It should be a little shorter than that for those folks who are needing to bridge that gap. So, I just ask that we consider that. If you have any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer. I know the business that I provide, and the number of folks I do that with is pretty substantial, the number of folks, so this does have a big, significant impact on my business, just having gotten out of the Air Force to grow it. So, this is a very interesting piece of legislation in my mind, because I also, as some folks have mentioned, believe that it will set a precedence to other areas, and I believe it should be just taken with caution on how it's going to impact other folks who run their business.
Very good, thank you. You say you, excuse me, you say you live in Kettering?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right? Where are your properties?
So, for the short-term ones right now, there's one off of Corona that I utilize that is a duplex that's right over there. Most of that is all military. Now, I will say, for the sake of Airbnb, do utilize that to fill in some of the small gaps, but it's something to where the majority of all of that is two weeks or longer. Just the twenty-five days, I know, will make a major impact on operating that location. So, one of the short-term places is over here, off of Corona Street in Oakwood, the other two are up in Huber Heights. So, those are the ones that I know pertain to specifically to this.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Who else would like to address council?
Can I just address-
You need to come, you need, I'll, I'll, I'll give you another minute.
I will take up a little here, to apologize.
That's okay.
I just wanted to respond to one thing that, yes, the host of our neighboring Airbnb does respond very quickly to incidents. We have had incidences. The only thing I would say to that is that, for example, when one of the groups of guests started throwing rocks at our house, he promptly dealt with it the next morning, but the incident occurred. So, again, you know, people can respond very quickly, but you can't undo the incident.
Understand. Who else would like to address council in the back, if you want to come forward? State your name and address for the record, and welcome.
I'm Amy Duvic, I live at one-thirty-one Rubicon Road, and I have had an Airbnb next door to me at twenty-five East Shants for approximately two, two-and-a-half years. It's a three-unit apartment building, and one of the units is rented out as an Airbnb on a regular, every-weekend basis. My experience with this has been awful. I have six children, we are a very active family, out in our yard all the time, have kids over at our home, I have, we have five cars between our teenage kids and myself. The parking is a major issue, because I think the host has told the Airbnb guests not to park in the driveway because of the two tenants who live in the apartment, so they are parked in front of my house all weekend long, and by the time I realize, like, on Sunday, hey, this guy is, you know, I see somebody like come in and out a couple of times, and it's like, okay, I want to address them and say, "Hey, do you mind parking up there or somewhere else, because this is where my kids park their cars," then they leave, and they're gone. We have had instances with kids running around in my yard in the middle of the night, playing Ghosts in the Graveyard, what, not my kids, these are the Airbnb people. We have had many, many kids in for weddings, and back from UD for reunions. I went to UD, I love UD, but I don't want to live in the ghetto anymore, and I don't want a next door to me. I have, I mean, four out of five weekends, it's, it's uncomfortable, it's, I don't know who they are, they're in and out, they are, they are not courteous to myself and the other neighbors. They leave garbage on the curb, they, I've had an instance of a gal come across the street, she was all wrapped up in a blanket, she dropped a wine bottle right in the middle of the street, started laughing, she was like drunk when inside the Airbnb. She didn't clean up. The tenants there don't like them either, they're fed up, they could not make it tonight. I, it's, it's just, I think when we moved here ten years ago, and I had a list of homes to live in, if I knew next door to me there was an Airbnb, that would have been crossed off my list, number one. I would never want to live next door to one. We live in a community with neighbors who care about each other, who, you know, we know each other, it's, it's, it's our home, it's a very small community, and it doesn't feel like that. I, I mean, everybody else around, they're great, we know, we've known each other for years. You know your habits of your neighbors, you're courteous to each other, you know, okay, my kids are teenagers now, okay, those guys have little kids, they go to bed early, you guys be quiet, go, you know, we know each other. This is not that situation. By the time I get a chance to address them for something, they're gone, and then it's going to happen the next weekend, and the next weekend. The owners of the Airbnb do not live locally, I don't know where they live, and so, to me, that's a problem. I feel that if maybe a regulation that they have to live in Oakwood to have an Airbnb in Oakwood, I don't know what laws, you know, if that's against whatever rules, but to me, that would make, instead of me having to sit there and clean up after these people, and wonder who's coming in next weekend to my, right next door, that they could address it, because they don't know what is going on. And I feel like, you know, the tenants who live there, I don't know if they have periodically complained to them, but they feel the same way, and the neighbors across the street feel the same way, and we're just, it's not a sense of community right now at all, and I just, I hate it, I absolutely hate it, and I appreciate Airbnbs. We do not live in a vacation town, I don't feel like, like, we stayed in an Airbnb outside of Yosemite, it was lovely, but it, I mean, I'm in Yosemite National Park, that's like a tourist trap, you know? I don't look at Oakwood, Ohio, as a place where people come to, you know, flock for tourism. I mean, I love our town, but it's a, it's a sense of home and community, and all these people, like, they love the neighborhood. Well, yeah, but they're not being good to the neighbors, and that's the problem, because they just come in and out, they do their thing, and they leave, and they, they have no sense of community here, because they don't know what our community is like. They don't come over and say, "Hey, do you, you know, yeah, great," they're asking the host, who, the majority of these hosts don't even live in Oakwood, and so, that's great, send them to Grater's. We have, we have a lot of people go to Grater's, Grater's is lovely, and we have enough people in Oakwood.
Please continue to address us.
Anyway, so, I'm just, I'm, I am, I'm very happy that this is on the table, and I feel putting in it twenty-five days is a great thing. I could see these people, okay, I've seen this car here for a week now, when they come out, I'm going to go say, "Hey, do you mind parking over there?" Like, I feel like it would give my family a sense of safety, in a sense, to know, okay, this is a familiar face, they're, they know I live here, and they're staying here for twenty-five days or two months or whatever, I can address them as a neighbor, because they're here for that length of time, to say, "Hey, do you mind, this is courteous to us, we, lights out," or whatever, you know, "Can you not party and have your music on super loud?" When they're there for two days, it's done, they're gone, they don't care. So, I think the idea of twenty-five days is wonderful, and I would love to see it passed, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Would you like, okay, let's see, okay, you get a minute.
Two things that haven't been considered. Some of my guests have dogs. There aren't a lot of hotels that are dog-friendly. One guest, they were buying a house in Oakwood, actually moving from Centerville, the house wasn't closing in time, they needed a place to stay with their dog. Second instance that I find often is there are people with severe dietary restrictions and issues, where they need to prepare their own food, their own meals, whether it be diabetes or any other number of things. I have a fully-stocked kitchen, I mean, down to, there's olive oil there, there's salt and pepper, there's flour, there's sugar, there's the stuff you need to bake, whatever, but they go out, they, they often bring all their own stuff, and they cook all their meals. This isn't something you can do in a hotel, at the Marriott or at Courtyard. So, these people, this is life-saving to them, that they have that opportunity to stay someplace where they can control their dietary restrictions. So, those are some things that you might want also consider.
All right, thank you. Who else wants to address council that hasn't addressed council already? Okay, the one person who I thought was going to address council just left, so I don't know if she's coming back or not. Come on, Gary, you get one minute.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilors. What I would ask is that you come up with some kind of licensing or permitting, where these owners would agree that if there are more than two calls for service by the police, they have to pay a fine, because they can subject that back on to their guests. I mean, if that's a concern, set rules and regulations that say, "If we get called out X number of times, we have the right to shut you down," and you're signing this, and you're agreeing to our laws. That's the way you make this thing work, you get rid of the bad apples, and the good ones can keep going and keep making Oakwood a great, a great little city.
All right, thank you. Did you wish to address council? All right, well, it's your turn. Again, state your name and address for the record again, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Cara Kite, and I live at three-three-eight Volusia Avenue. So, I, I'm going to keep it short tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My husband and I moved here with our oldest son ten years ago this month. We moved from the South Park Historical District in Dayton to Volusia Avenue in Oakwood. We moved here to provide for the comfort, safety, and welfare of our child and our children, you know, we anticipated on having more. That was why we moved here, for the comfort, safety, and welfare. Oakwood is two-point-one-nine square miles, and you are our elected officials, we thank you for your service, but we elect you to look out for us, not for property owners in Dayton or property owners in Kettering. I'm not concerned about case law and how it affects them, I'm concerned about my community and my neighborhood, and my investment, and my property. It's interesting to me that Ms. Birch operates bed and breakfast out of her home, that's what it sounded like to me. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but it's interesting. I'm actually more for that, because she's there, she's living on-site, so she can have some kind of control if things get out of hand, and maybe the people that are renting from her know that. She's there, so it kind of tempers things. I'm just surprised, because I didn't think that was allowed here, and, I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm going to start renting out a bedroom to make some extra money. I, until January first. And I, I just want to thank you for enacting this ordinance, I think it's the right thing to do. Airbnbs do not give us the tranquility and the character, the permanent character, that we all moved to Oakwood for. So, I want to thank you for protecting us, really, because I think that's what you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else wants us to address council? You want to, I'll give, one minute, or forty-five seconds. Rebutts are always one minute.
Amy Duvic, I just would like to say that, in reference to having to have a kitchen and to your diet needs, staying only in an Airbnb, when we moved here ten years ago, we had twenty-five days before we closed on our home here, and we were displaced from North Carolina, so we stayed at the Residence Inn by Marriott in Beaver Creek. It was lovely, I had five kids at the time, and a golden retriever, who was over a hundred pounds. They take dogs, we had a turtle in there, we had five kids, and my husband and myself, and I commuted to Oakwood, took my kids to school, we closed on August twenty-ninth of that year, and we made it work, and we had a kitchen in there, we had a full breakfast downstairs every morning, but if we had any dietary needs, I was not eating out every day, every meal, with a family of seven at the time. So, there are other options than Airbnb.
All right, thank you. All right.
She does get a rebuttal, so, everybody gets one.
Sorry, real quick, I also wanted to say, I mentioned that Oakwood is two-point-one-nine square meters, as you all know.
Miles.
But?
Miles.
Miles, 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 meters, it needs to be technical. But, my point is, is that Airbnbs are so popular, as people have come and read you reviews, I think we can, you know, I think there's plenty of other options in Kettering and Dayton and the surrounding area. I don't think there's, you know, that big of a need. If, if we say they're not allowed here, they're certainly very popular, and they certainly exist in other places close by, I don't think we're, you know, really, thanks.
All right, thank you. You can try and remember, have you spoke before, come down here before? Well, then, you get three minutes if you want it, but if you, but assuming you have something that no one else has said, that would be helpful as well, but again, state your name and record for the-
I'm Jeff Kempton, I live at eight-one-six Acorn Drive. My wife and I are fairly new residents of Oakwood, we've lived here since November, and I'll say that when my daughters were born, almost three years ago, we immediately put our, we immediately made the plans to put our previous home up for sale, and one of the, two of the reasons we chose Oakwood was the phenomenal school system, as well as the sense of community, and since I've lived here, the, the community has been unlike anything I've ever experienced. It's, it's been amazing in every regard. My neighbors are the friendliest people I've ever met, I, I feel like I would trust them after only knowing them for a few months, whereas I wouldn't necessarily trust the neighbors in my previous house, and I lived there ten years. I, I said the reason we looked to put our house up for sale as soon as our daughters were born was because, one of the reasons we did was because of the increase in short and long-term rentals. We started to see an increase in people that we didn't recognize, they, a fair, transient community is perhaps the best way I can describe them. We didn't know who they were, where they came from, sometimes friendly, sometimes not, and now that I have two children, I, I like knowing who my neighbors are, I like knowing who's going to be in the house, who's going to be in the house next to me, across the street from me on a regular basis, and particularly because I travel for work on a, on a fairly regular basis, my wife and I both like knowing who's going to be around us at any given time, again, given that we have two small children. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. You get, I'll give you forty-five seconds, Kate.
I've actually been rather shocked to hear about this kind of absentee landlord situation, such as the house on Volusia that Mrs. Duvic described, and I don't think that Airbnb, the company, would be in favor of that, because they expect the hosts to rate their guests, and how can they do that if they don't, if they aren't even there? And I also think that the company, Airbnb, would be very interested to learn about a situation such as she described, where people are making noise and having kids being outside playing at all hours of the night. It's not the way it's supposed to be. So, I think-
All right, thank you for that. Who else has not spoken this evening? Would you like to speak? I think your spouse spoke, is that correct? But, you know, you never want him to have the last word, so, again, if you could state your name and address for the record, welcome.
Yeah, it's Sarah Gwinup at four-four-seven Volusia.
Volusia, okay.
And, like he said, my husband earlier said, two weeks, two weekends ago, I did have to call the police department three different times for noise violations. They, and they weren't sighted or ticketed anytime I called, but I just wanted to make a record of it at least, that this noise level was bothering me at three AM, right at their patio at the back of their house is right next to our bedroom, and he was out of town, out of the country even, for work, and like the other gentleman said, you know, "I'm home kind of often with my five kids without him, he goes on work trips pretty regularly throughout the whole year." We've only been dealing with our neighbors at an Airbnb for the past, like, I think it's only been operating for like three months now, and that was the first time we've had to like call with a problem, and I'm not against Airbnbs, I just think the zoning, if we're zoned as a residential area on our, if that's what we are, Airbnb is a business, so is that allowed in a residential area? Like, what- Like, should it be permitted maybe in like a commercial area of Oakwood versus an actual residential zoned location? And I do, you know, are, we have a lot of kids, there's a lot of kids on the whole street. What if there's a sex offender that rents next door? We have no idea who's going to be there and that really, really, really bothers me and makes me nervous and kind of upset. I'm not saying that would ever happen, but it's not out of the question because I don't know how you could possibly regulate that and it doesn't show anywhere on Airbnb, looking at their site. They actually do have an Airbnb neighbors site that you can communicate an issue with an Airbnb in your neighborhood. But I don't know where that gets you. You have to like submit so much weird information and it looks like it could just get lost in the shuffle of their website. But I just really think like being in a residential area, we bought a house in a residential area to live with our family and I'm not opposed to rentals. If the house next door was a one-year lease, fine, I would at least know who's there every day for that year versus a weekend or four days or whatever. So I definitely am for the ban on this for Oakwood, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, well, I appreciate all of you coming here for your, your comments, they've been very helpful for me. Does anybody have any, any questions that you want to talk about this? I have, I have one. I, I know that at one point, you know, we, we raised the, the, the date from November 1 to January 1 after hearing from some people that already had contracts. I thought I had heard that there was some contracts even in January. Is there any appetite for extending that deadline to say March 1 or, or not? Or do you feel January 1 is, is adequate?
I think January 1 is fine.
So I will obviously not make a motion now. This is going to die for lack of a second.
Yeah.
All right. And, and I guess the, the other question is, what I see is, it's this classic issue that we have in Oakwood, but primarily local government. It's about land use and, you know, I've always been a believer of giving the property owner, the property owner should be able to do with their property what they want, but at the same time, we have zoning. And, and, and that's, that's always a conundrum as to how you weigh the rights of the community versus the rights of the property owner. And it's, and I'm, I'm struggling with this. I don't know if, if there's a way, several people have said that there's, you know, is there a way that we could tighten this ordinance up and maybe allow some of this but not others? I'm, I'm struggling with that myself, but I don't know whether it's something that we could study in more detail and come back. I'm, I'm leaning towards, you know, while I, while I'm not opposed to the short-term rentals, my concern from the, the neighbors that have had bad experiences, I've heard a lot of people that had outstanding experiences and a lot of people that had horrible experiences and I'm trying to weigh that in my mind. And that's, that's just really where I'm, where I'm coming from. But I mean, it's something that, that if we wanted to postpone this and we continue to get complaints, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for just saying we're not going to do it because it's not, it's not part of the residential community that Oakwood has been since 1908. I mean, it's, it's a tough one for me, so. Does anybody have anything else?
I believe the ordinance that was presented by the Vice Mayor comports with the nature and character of Oakwood.
Mm-hmm.
I've listened to 13 people, three Dayton residents, three Kettering residents, and seven Oakwood residents. And I've heard what they've had to say and their experiences. And I have no doubt that, and people talk about Airbnb and being able to review it and it's a business and so forth, but I think this is regarding short-term rentals. So I'm sure there are more than one type of company that does this and it has its place. It, it definitely has its place. It's great for vacations and things like that, just gives you many different alternatives. But I don't see how that fits with our community.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
I don't hear any.
Councilmember, she has any comments for you?
My comments are, are basically what Mr. Epley said, the fact that it's residential community.
All right.
And the, the main factor for me is that I've been, I've used Airbnb, I've used VRBO and multiple situations. And two of the three times I've used them were vacation spots, literally. The one time I used it when it was a bad experience was when I didn't rent it, but I was there visiting some friends who'd rented it, we were out of town. And literally the families that I was there with, now, we left at like 11 o'clock, they stayed up till 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. And I know this because they told me that the next day. And there were eight high school age boys upstairs and there were seven adults downstairs. Everybody was up and I couldn't believe, when they told me the next day, how late everybody was up and the noise and everything. And this was in a neighborhood very similar to Oakwood. And I always said, ever since I left, this was, this has happened two years in a row. So obviously, and I know they got it off the Airbnb site, hate to slam on Airbnb since we're talking about short-term rentals, but they rented the same home two years in a row. And it happened two years in a row, so that the problem wasn't fixed. This actually occurred in Indianapolis, I can call out the city. But I couldn't believe it. And all I ever think of, and this is way before we even brought this topic up, that I would not want that next to my house. You know, when I leave work, when I leave council, I want to go home and not have noise complaints. I don't want to hear that the Gwinups had to call the Oakwood Police Department on noise complaints. We can't stop noise complaints. We got high school kids, MIP outlay, we got other adult, there are noise complaints, you can't stop them all. But this is an opportunity to get ahead of it when I think our Oakwood Police Department can do other things than to be going on noise complaints caused by people that don't live here, that can come and go as they want. And, and obviously, we don't have a huge issue with it right now. What's our number we came up with, possibly nine or 10 in Oakwood? Somewhere in that range if I'm not mistaken? The number to me isn't important. I don't want the one time to have a problem, you know, and then somebody brought up parking, that's a concern. We already have parking issues in our city. I can imagine, you know, when you, you either go to one of these vacation homes, rental homes, you go when you, you have a large group of people, that's a lot of times what it's for. Now, there are, you know, times when you go, and these homes that these, these individuals in Dayton and Kettering are talking about are, sound like beautiful homes. If we could go for free, I'd go, but I don't need to go stay in Dayton and Kettering, I'm, I'm here. They sound like beautiful homes and I'm sure they are and I'm sure they help out people, you know, single people, the couple that are here from India visiting their children, that's great. But I also know there's the factor of, you know, the property on Volusia or Rubicon when they're so close to UD. I use this example when people in the community have told me how much they are appreciative of this, this ordinance, that, I give them the example, it's a UD alumni weekend and six 2015 UD alumni males come back for, you know, homecoming weekend. The people next door aren't going to get much sleep that weekend, in my opinion. And I, you know, it, that's not slamming on you, I know what I was like when I was 25, 26, 27 years old, 52. Yeah, and if you, I just, our citizens move here for three things, schools, safety, and services. And I firmly believe that, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that all these people that have spoke tonight who live in Dayton and Kettering, they send their, I'll call them tenants, their short-term renters to Oakwood, we appreciate that. But that boost in the Oakwood economy is not of value to me compared to what the detriment of safety for young families and noise complaints and our aging stock of our homes with the out-of-town, I mean, you know, the property where the person lives on premises, I think that's fabulous because they're there. But when I rented one in Charleston, you know, the guy lived like three blocks away and he was on top of us all the time, he cared about his house, that's fine. But it's the out-of-town owners that concern me. That they, how will they know that a noise complaint was called in? You know? How will they know that there was trash left on the street before Ms. Duvic had to pick it up? The, the bottle of wine that was, who, who's going to accuse them? There's a lot of different factors to me that, that are, that concern me on the safety, schools, and services. So I think January 1st is fine and I don't think that this fits with what we want on the residential family atmosphere of Oakwood.
Okay. Vice Mayor Byington, do you have any comments?
Yes, I have several comments. I'll start off with the impromptu comments and then I have a, a statement. Start off with, I'll say, we've talked a lot about Airbnb this evening. Airbnb is not the only game in town. And while I genuinely appreciate the fact that Airbnb has super hosts and standards and those type of things, you know, it was talked about, you know, if, if the property or the, is not kept up, they can be kicked off Airbnb. My thought is, then what prevents those people from going to any one of those other sites and putting that property right back on another site? And as much as I'm sure Airbnb is probably the gold standard for when people are traveling, I also know that, you know, if I'm looking for a hotel, I look at all the different options. So possibly you find something on a different service that's a little bit cheaper, if you don't use Airbnb, you use one of these other ones. What's to prevent people from having bad experiences on that? The other thing I, I find, this is a very unique situation because in listening to all the various different testimony about people who own very, Airbnbs, I'm going to call them STRs, short-term rentals, people who own those, it sounds like they're fantastic places. The reviews are, are wonderful in Dayton and Kettering and wherever. So to me, it's, it seems a little odd, I don't know if there's any other situation where a business owner is actually encouraging other people to compete against their business. It just seems like a very odd thing to do. To me, it seems, as was mentioned before, we have a very small community and if people need to utilize those services and want to go to Grater's, it sounds like they can stay in Kettering and it's equally as close than depending on where in Oakwood they were staying. So that was just a, a strange thing to me is that it doesn't seem like there's a lot of businesses that would encourage other people to compete against them, but. And then another comment that was made and, and I just wanted to make sure that people understand this, is this, this issue has been on our radar for several months. So statements like, you know, we haven't spent enough time thinking about this and we need to do more research and those type of things, that's not accurate. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. And that leads into my, my prepared statement. The decision we're making tonight is not being made in haste and, and nor without extensive research. I personally have examined cities across the United States like Anaheim, Denver, New Orleans, and Santa Monica, as well as international cities like Amsterdam, and actually Barcelona was mentioned as well, and Berlin, who have addressed the rapid rise of STRs and what specific steps those communities have taken to deal with this kind of situation. As with virtually every contentious property use issue, as the mayor mentioned, there's, it's always contentious. The, the methodologies that were used to, to address them were very complex and were very community-centric. They were based on the community itself, not necessarily all the folks that are around them. Let's see. As such, when I looked at what remedies were proposed and measures that were taken, I had to look at them against what Oakwood's specific characteristics are. So something that might work for Berlin, might work for Denver, something like that in terms of either regulations or whatever else, might not necessarily work for Oakwood given the fact that we're predominantly residential community. The factors I looked at included the neighborhood preservation, housing availability, protecting quality of life, economic development, and safety, as well as realistic, a realistic look at enforcement capabilities and the resources that would be needed to do those enforcement items. I also familiarized myself with many of the STR listings within our community and reviewed the feedback left by users of those properties. So all the things that you read this evening, over the last week, I've been reviewing all those things as well. I know how great these various different properties are. And I understand the effect that this legislation will have on those properties and I'm sensitive to the repercussions that might be experienced. But on top of my qualitative research, I've also added a quantitative component which involves getting out in the community and asking actual residents and business owners how they felt on the matter. I spent two evenings knocking on doors on both sides, on north side and the south side of Dayton. And I will tell you, just for a point of reference, that's a very difficult thing to do now that we have a no solicit list in the city of Oakwood. So if you live in certain various different areas and you didn't get, that's because I respected the no solicit list and only knocked on doors that were not on that list. But I also then spent a morning surveying residents at the Oakwood Farmers Market and then spent an entire afternoon talking with shop owners in both of our major business districts. The overwhelming response, and I say overwhelming because I would say there's only been maybe one or two that were against this legislation, overwhelming response was that they were in favor of the, the legislation that is before us this evening. I'm convinced that I, as well as my fellow council members, have done our due diligence in reviewing this matter. One of the most powerful aspects of local government is that unlike the state and federal government and their legislative bodies, we have established a record of responding to issues that affect our community in a timely manner. We don't kick the can down the road, we don't stall things and hope that the public will get distracted by other challenges or divert their attention elsewhere. We listen to our constituents, we do our homework, and then decisively act in the best interest of the community as a whole. While our decisions might not always be universally popular, there's no doubt in my mind that they are made with the intention of being beneficial to the widest group of Oakwood residents as possible. Ultimately, for me, this comes down to a matter of whose interest I care most about, long-term residents of the city or those who choose to visit it. My vote will be on behalf of my friends and neighbors who call Oakwood home. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Obviously, we've, most of the time when we have issues like this, you generally only hear from one side to come to the council meeting, you know, it's always the people that are upset about something. Obviously, this is a contentious issue because we've had a lot of people both in favor and in opposition to this resolution. So no matter how we vote, some of you aren't going to be happy tonight. Am I correct, Mr. Law Director, that the recourse that a citizen, a citizen would have, an Oakwood citizen, I believe, is if they don't like the ordinance that we have passed, do they have the ability through initiative and referendum to, to override the council's decision on this matter?
Yes, through the referendum process.
Can you describe that to the people at home?
There's a, there's a 30-day window of time in which they would have to file a referendum petition if they chose to do so. There's, there's quite a bit of procedural steps in the revised code, I'm not sure how much detail you're looking for, but they have that, they have a window of 30 days to file that before this would take effect. And in fact, after the 30 days are up here, they can still file a referendum beyond that, but we do still have, both ends of the ordinance, that the effective date of the pro-division would be January 1st.
Okay. My concern was, in order to get something on a November ballot, if somebody was so predisposed to do that, don't you have to file that with the county within 90 days of the election, which is like Wednesday?
I don't know how close we are to the cutoff and whether you'd be able to make it.
I mean, there's, there is recourse though.
Yes, there is.
And that recourse would be for citizens of Oakwood.
Correct.
That would, that, am I correct, it is citizens of Oakwood?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, well, I think I have no other questions or comments. Do you, do you all have anything?
No.
Okay. Lori, would you please call a roll? Oh, I'm sorry, what?
When, when you read the introduction, I think you stopped just short of reading the motion to go on.
Nope, I did. I read the motion.
Then I may have just misheard.
Oh, yeah, he read the motion and it was seconded.
Yeah, Rob.
Rob seconded it.
Yeah.
It was moved and seconded.
I stand corrected, go ahead.
All right. Lori, may you call a roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Reluctantly, I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I would like to point a personal privilege to go to the restroom for three minutes. Is that okay?
I'll give you a minute, Mayor.
Minute, a minute.
Forty-five seconds.
I'll be right back. All right, we, we'll go ahead and get started. Our city manager will be back shortly, but he is not needed for my resolution and it is a resolution to continue participating in a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan in conjunction with the Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management. In 2014, council adopted Resolution 1789 to authorize the city's participation in the Montgomery County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a county-wide emergency management and mitigation plan to address regional vulnerability to natural disasters. The 2014 plan has now been updated and this resolution will authorize Oakwood's participation under the 2019 plan in ways that are feasible and appropriate to the city's needs, resources, and responsibilities in the community. I would move council adopt this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I'd now like to have our Chief, Alan Hill, to comment on, on this particular resolution prior to us voting.
Your Honor and Council, mitigation planning is the cornerstone for emergency management. It is the ongoing effort designed to lessen the impact of a disaster. The plan that we're talking about here is a comprehensive document illustrating how na- natural hazards can impact the county, while it provides a hazard analysis to identify areas of the county that are at most risk for disasters such as flooding, tornadoes, snow and ice storms, and wind, windstorm damages. This particular plan is designed with four goals in mind. One is to increase public awareness. Two is to protect life and property. Three is to create and strengthen partnerships. And four is to create a safer environment for us all. Memorial Day weekend forever changed the aesthetic look of a lot of neighborhoods within the county. And such plans like this, when we're faced with such tragic events, and I know that's hard to say with what just happened over the weekend, but for some, it was a tragic event, plans like this help all of us respond and recover from that. So for these reasons, I'm recommending we continue participation with the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan in conjunction with the Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions for the Chief? All right, it has been moved and seconded. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens has his most favorite resolution of the year to introduce next.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. A resolution to authorize and direct the Director of Finance to certify certain delinquent charges for cutting noxious weeds to the county auditor for collection. Each year, the city incurs costs for mowing overgrown yards when owners do not take care of their property. The city bills property owners for those costs, and most of them do pay. For those who do not pay, this is our annual resolution to certify the costs to the county auditor so they can be added to the tax bill for each property. This 2019 certification includes 11 properties at a total dollar amount of $4,026.66. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will you please call the roll, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Yeah, yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Byington has a resolution.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a resolution to authorize the reallocation of the city's inside millage property tax revenues. It's a resolution that will change the allocation of city's inside millage property tax revenues. It says that prior to 1965, local governments in Ohio handled their own pension plans for police and fire employees. This was changed in 1965 by the Ohio General Assembly, which enacted legislation to create the state-administered Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund. In doing so, many municipalities, including Oakwood, had liabilities exceeding the assets needed to pay future pension benefits and owed a net pension liability to the state of Ohio. In order to minimize the financial impact on the city, the state authorized a 65-year payoff term with the first payment due in 1970 and the final payment due in 2035. We are still more than 15 years away from the maturity of this obligation. The remaining balance is approximately $404,000, and we are paying an average annual interest rate of 4.25%. Council believes it is prudent to pay off this liability early because we are paying more in interest than we are receiving in investment income. This resolution states council's intention to pursue an accelerated payoff of the pension liability. The city plans to make two payments of approximately $200,000 each to eliminate this liability. One payment will be made in late 2019, and the second in early 2020. The resolution also requests that Montgomery County Budget Commission reallocate 0.3 mils of inside millage property tax revenue from the police pension fund to the general fund. And I move that council adopt this resolution this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Next, I have a resolution approving an isolation and quarantine policy for infectious diseases and other public health emergencies as adopted by the Oakwood Board of Health. The Ohio Revised Code requires local boards of health to adopt a policy concerning isolation and quarantine authority. In doing so, the law also allows local boards of health to delegate isolation and quarantine authority to the Health Commissioner. This is an important public health tool in that it allows for immediate action to be taken by the Health Commissioner in times of emergency, instead of requiring the entire board of health to convene a meeting before the situation can be addressed. The Oakwood Board of Health recently adopted Resolution 19-2, which is an isolation and quarantine policy that delegates authority to the Health Commissioner in times of emergency to act on the board's behalf until such time in the future that the board can meet. As required by the Ohio Revised Code, council must approve this policy in order for it to take effect. We have reviewed the policy and concur with the board of health that it is in the public interest to approve it, and so I would move that council adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And finally, Councilmember Epley has a resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor. A resolution approving the Montgomery County Intermunicipal Waste Services Agreement. Along with all other cities in Montgomery County, Oakwood is a member community of the Montgomery County Solid Waste District and contracts with the district to receive the refuse we collect. Our current contract with the district dates back to 1985 and is due to be updated. Over the last year, member communities and the district have worked together to develop a new agreement for processing and disposing of solid waste in Montgomery County, which is now before council for approval. We believe that the new agreement serves the best interests of the city, and this resolution will authorize this city manager to sign it. I move that council adopt this resolution tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Epley? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We have a very interesting staff report coming up from our Public Safety Department. Chief Hill, welcome again.
Your Honor, Council, Mr. Klops, just a couple of things I would just like to bring you up to speed on with what's going on in the Safety Department, some current things we're doing, some history of some cases that have either been resolved or hopefully will soon be resolved, and a couple of programs we're doing within the community. You know, I mentioned this last year. You know, each school year, with regards to Irving Avenue enforcement, each school year, the Safety Department emphasizes the enforcement of parking along Irving Avenue in an effort to control violations of the time-restricted parking areas. It's a two-hour parking down there. That continues to be an ongoing effort. We understand and recognize those are our, those are Oakwood citizens that are living on the south side of Irving, and their quality of life can be dramatically affected during the UD school year. Most, I guess, it's affected by they don't have anywhere to park. They can't park in front of their house because throughout the day, it's just students that are coming in. They're circumventing the university parking rules, or they're not buying a parking pass, and they're choosing just to park on a public street. So we diligently enforce this daily throughout the school year, and for this period during January of May of 2019, we issued 145 citations along Irving Avenue. I think the important thing is not necessarily the amount of citations to be effective, it's what we're doing as far as enforcement effective. I don't know if the number, whether it's 145, or 250, or 175, is important. I think what's important is, are we getting feedback from the citizens in the form of complaints? And the answer is no. Historically, the last month of each school year is when the most citizen complaints are received, specifically during exam week. Nobody parks in the parking garage, or in the parking lots during exam week. They park on the streets, they go in, they take their exam, and they're out. But I'm pleased to report again, there were no major concerns, and zero complaints were received again this year. As the school year is upon us, here within a couple of weeks for UD and next week for the Oakwood schools, we will once again be monitoring this area and our school zones for violations. Cases of note, back in February of 2018, the Lebanon Citizens National Bank was robbed. This individual, Mr. Vaughn, entered the bank, handed a teller a note, and demanded money. In the following days, Detective Yount actually received an investigative lead, and he began following up on the information received. Shortly thereafter, Mr. Anthony Vaughn was arrested and charged with robbery. He was actually a City of Kettering resident and lived over just off of West Dorothy, right around the corner from the bank. Ultimately, Mr. Vaughn elected to take this to trial in May of this year. At the conclusion of the trial, he was found guilty of the robbery, and he was sentenced to three years in prison. More recently, during the early morning hours of June 14th of this year, Officer Payne attempted to stop a stolen vehicle on Far Hills near Patterson Road. That suspect vehicle almost immediately fled and crashed at the intersection of Far Hills and Spirea. As Officer Payne exited the cruiser and was approaching the vehicle to check on the occupants, the driver of that vehicle put the car in reverse, backing up in a very quick manner, and actually almost striking Officer Payne. From there, a short vehicle pursuit ensued, and it ended in the parking lot of the Dayton Reliable Tool with the suspect ramming Officer Payne's patrol vehicle. You can see the picture there in the presentation of the damage that was caused to the vehicle. Actually, it was a total loss to the vehicle. The vehicle was totaled out as a result of the crash. The driver, 19-year-old Jackie Newton, was arrested and ultimately charged with felony of first-degree assault on a police officer, failure to comply, felony vandalism, and unauthorized use of a motor vehicle. And this court action is currently pending against Ms. Newton in this case, and we're hopefully it'll be resolved here in the very near future. Pretty significant case for us, and especially, you know, with our cruiser getting totaled as a result of the incident. Probably the most significant thing that has happened with us in the last couple of years is actually a recent case that was resolved of international terrorism. Very unique for us here in Oakwood because Lieutenant Bellage, who's with us tonight, he was on duty, and I asked him to stop by, or stop by because of the importance of this case. I think him and several others need to be recognized. Lieutenant Bellage has a part-time assignment on the Dayton Joint Terrorism Task Force. So in addition to his duties at Oakwood, he occasionally works with the Joint Terrorism Task Force as well. And on July 16th of this year, Lieutenant Bellage and other members of the task force were recognized by the U.S. Attorney's Office for their outstanding work and dedication leading to the arrest and conviction of an individual named Lath Alabini, who was a Dayton resident. During early 2017, a federal investigation began with Mr. Alabini as the suspect. He moved here from the Virginia area. He had an incident in Washington, D.C. at an embassy, and Mr. Alabini made some very disturbing statements that kind of put himself on the radar. Just by happenstance, he happened to relocate to the Dayton, Ohio area, and that's where Chuck, Lieutenant Bellage, and the JTTF team got involved. Ultimately, in August of, or in April of 2017, Mr. Alabini was arrested at the Cincinnati, Kentucky International Airport as he was attempting to board a plane to fly to Jordan. From there, Alabini had made plans to travel to Syria to join ISIS. Alabini was committed to traveling overseas for the purpose of joining ISIS and engaging in violence in support of a foreign terrorist organization. Just prior to boarding the plane, Alabini actually sent a text to a family member stating, quote, "I am a terrorist." Alabini was found guilty at a trial for attempting to conspire and provide material support and resources, most importantly, himself, to ISIS, and was recently sentenced to 15 years in prison. The time in involvement in an investigation like this is immense. Lieutenant Bellage and other members of the Joint Terrorism Task Force, for 18 months, worked daily, countless hours. When the investigation itself was going on, although it was short-term, it was around the clock. This was a very, very, very dangerous individual. For our community in our region, he was motivated on traveling overseas to commit violence versus committing violence here. And I think our community often is not aware sometimes of these types of cases because they catch a quick blip on the news, and it moves on to the next story or to the next page of the newspaper. But our county, our city, our state, and our country is a safer place because of Lieutenant Bellage and the work of the Joint Terrorism Task Force, and I think- Chuck, we thank you for your work and your effort on this case. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Excuse me, am I correct? This is the first case of a conviction in southwest Ohio? This is the first international conviction, or the first case to go to trial with a conviction in the Southern District of Ohio, which is the U.S. jurisdiction court. So it's a significant case, and it's one of a handful of cases in the history of the federal court system for an international terrorism case to go to trial. So it's a very significant case. Thank you. Chuck and the members of his team were rightfully recognized for their work. Here locally, we just hit a milestone with our DARE program. I think it's been a great partnership with the schools over the last quarter century, 25 years. On June 14th of this year, the Oakwood Public Safety Department was recognized for 25 years of dedication to the DARE program. The longevity of this program has only been a success by the commitment of current past DARE officers and the continued partnership with the schools. I think this is a great recognition for us, our achievement for us, you know, 25 years with the DARE program. The leash law update, I think it's important because, you know, earlier this year, we passed a leash law. We had a lot of conversation about that prior to the passage of the law, and I felt it was important to follow up to council on what impact, if any, this has had within the community, and the answer to that is none. Since taking effect in early February, the Safety Department has not received any complaints. We have not given any warnings or issued any citations as a result of a violation of this ordinance. Public safety access point compliance, PSAPs, dispatch centers. In May of 2016, the state of Ohio implemented 19 standards for all public safety answering points within the state of Ohio. All dispatch centers were required to achieve compliance within two years from the adoption, or from the date of the adoption. Council has always supported us having our own dispatch center. With regionalization and some of the other things that have gone on, some of these standards were specifically put in place to eliminate centers just like ours, to make it more challenging to operate independently. And I'm proud to say, as we stand here today, in May of 2019, all Montgomery County PSAPs were audited for compliance, and on June 26th of this year, Oakwood received notification that we were in full compliance with the standards required for operating a PSAP. I think it's a tremendous accomplishment because, again, these standards were put in place for more of a challenge for a dispatch center like ours than a Kettering or Centerville or a much larger regional dispatch center. So I think it's a great accomplishment that we were able to do that, and we appreciate the support. The Oakwood Citizen Police Academy, in September, here in a little over a month, we will be hosting our second Citizens Police Academy. We initiated this community outreach program last year. The program will run, the CPA will run, from September 11th to November 13th. The academy will last 10 weeks, and we'll meet one night per week for two hours. Some of the topics that we will cover include an introduction and orientation of our Safety Department, patrol operations, traffic enforcement, use of force, an active shooter training/overview, evidence collection and processing, and fire prevention and education. We think it's a very unique opportunity for us to engage the citizens. We typically limit the class to 12. We currently already have 11 signed up, so we do have a few more opportunities. We'll go up to 14 or 15. So if anybody out there is watching in the audience that has interest, you can go to our website, and you can pull an application from there. It is free of charge. It is open to any Oakwood resident or anybody working within the city of Oakwood, and we're currently taking applications, and we're excited again to offer this program. Most recently, in March of this year, we implemented a program called ACORN, which is short for Assisting and Contributing to Oakwood Needs. This program is designed to assist residents in times of an emergency, provide peace of mind through proactive community outreach, implement safety plans, and advocating for the well-being of Oakwood senior and at-risk population. I'm overwhelmingly pleased with the response. When I approached Mr. Klops about this, I said, "In three years, if we have 30 people When I approached Mr. Klops about this, I said, "In three years, if we have 30 people enrolled in the ACORN program, I will call that a success." Here, five months later, as of now, we've been contacted by over 20 individuals about the program. We've individually met with 17, and we've signed up 12 Oakwood residents. So I think we're off to a great start. And I think the important thing about the ACORN program, this is a very hard population to reach. They're at-risk population, mostly your elderly population. They're not reading the newspaper every day. They're not on the internet. They're not out in the community. So for us, it's very hard to reach this population, and for us to have this kind of response, I'm very pleased with. In closing, obviously, yesterday morning was a very tragic event in our region, and I would be remiss not to acknowledge the six Dayton police officers that responded within 28 seconds and put a stop to that violent act. An individual who was committed to his cause was able to murder people, murder nine people in 28 seconds. And if those officers would have not been right there to stop that, who knows how many more lives would have been lost. As a public safety official, I think it's important to acknowledge their courage and their commitment to serve in the community, and I think we all owe them a lot more than a thank you. So with that, I'll-
Amen. Any questions for the chief? Again, please, please give our regards to your entire staff. We've got the best group of Oakwood Public Safety Officers we've probably ever had, without a doubt, and we appreciate all their service as well.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Time for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be very brief this evening. I want to also make a comment about prostate cancer. As you know, I visited my father last week, and he just turned 87 in June, end of June. And I forget exactly how many years ago, but it was over 20 years ago, Dad was diagnosed.
Oh, wow.
And he was diagnosed early, at the early stages, and underwent some radiation treatment and surgery, and he's alive today. My uncle, who was four years younger than my father, was diagnosed at a much more advanced stage, and his treatment was much more aggressive, and he unfortunately passed away about a year and a half ago, not from prostate cancer, but it was a much more difficult process for him. So I'm, believe me, I'm all for the screening and reminding folks to have this testing done. My other comment tonight is, as you know, it's a sad comment about Dr. Dick Garrison, who passed away, I believe, one week ago today. You'll remember back in either December or January this past year, we publicly recognized Dr. Garrison for 35 years of service to our community here. He served for 26 years as our medical director for our outstanding fire EMS department, and 10 years as our health commissioner, so that's 36 years. So one year he did both. And just recognized regionally here as an outstanding ER physician, and he was a good friend and just an outstanding man. A little bit late in his career, he joined the Ohio National Guard, and he was very proud to serve in the military. An aviation expert of sorts, he was, in addition to being a fine physician, and he was only 65 years old. He fought cancer, not prostate, a different type of cancer, valiantly for, I want to say, roughly three years. So just sad to make that report tonight. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none. It's time for council comments. Councilmember Epley?
Thank you, Your Honor. No comments tonight.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a comment about Dayton, which isn't Oakwood, but it's, they're an important neighbor. My dad and I went to a play last Friday night at the old courthouse, and there were two other things going on, big things. The Urban Outdoor Experience at Riverside and then K-12, K-12 Arts Show, and very well-attended, so much so that we had to change our parking plan. But it's so great to see so many things going on downtown. I grew up here, and it definitely wasn't always that way. The other thing is the Annual Ice Cream Socialist Sunday. It's just a couple of days before school starts, and I forget the hours, but they're on the website. It's, and there's ice cream and chicken dinners, games, music, all the good stuff, so it's a great event.
I think it starts around 3:30.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Just a couple of quick comments. As the Public Safety Department falls under my committee, I want to personally commend you and your department, and please send thank yous to all your officers. I appreciate all their visibility. You know, with my job, I drive around the city all the time, and I see them all over the place, and that's what we want as Oakwood citizens, to see the officers, and we really do appreciate that. And segueing into that, I'm sure we will see them in the upcoming week as school starts on Tuesday. So I don't know the logistics of exactly how we handle that, but I know they're actually more visible once school starts, and they're going to be there. And, you know, I just send a small plea out to all the families to leave early. Don't go speeding into the school district if your child is late. And if the weather's beautiful, try to walk to school. That helps everyone out, including yourself. So I just, it's a good time of year. I want to thank the public safety officers, and good luck to everyone in the Oakwood School District.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, and building upon what Councilmember Stevens mentioned, particularly speaking about visibility, the farmer's market is still going on. It's a fantastic event. I was there this last weekend when they had the kids' market, and the public safety officers brought out the fire truck out there. There were, Chuck was there, other folks were there, and allowed the kids to kind of see what they do, climb around on the fire truck, because who doesn't love doing that? So it's great that the community gets to see exactly what they're doing, put name with faces and that kind of thing, so. But if you get a chance, get out to the Oakwood Farmer's Market. They have a lot of fantastic stuff. Huge fan of the pickle guy, I don't know, fantastic pickles. If you like hot pickles, they're fantastic. But the kids' market thing was also very cool as well. Bought a couple of comic books from a local artist here. Young lady, I think she was only like eight or nine years old, but fantastic work. And then also, as was mentioned, school starts, so slow down, you know. It's going to take a while for people to get used to the routes and things like that, so the kids are still figuring out how to get to where they need to be, particularly the new kids in the area, so take it slow.
Thank you. I'd like to also echo Chief Hill's comments about the first responders for the city of Dayton. When you watch that video, which I'm sure most of you have seen, it's just unbelievable how that thing could have been just, you know, a horrific tragedy. And losing nine people is tragedy enough, but when you think of all the people that they saved, it's just, it's mind-boggling. I'd also like to thank Mayor Nan Whaley for her leadership during this crisis, not only this one, but the tornado. I thought she has done an outstanding job in dealing with the media, and I thought, I watched every one of their press conferences on Sunday, and I thought that they were extremely transparent with the media, and they told them when they were asking stupid questions to come back at 4 o'clock when you can get the answer. And they have done that. And then finally, I'd like to thank all of the other, you know, federal, state, and local elected officials that, you know, were on the dais with her showing solidarity for the Dayton region. And so we appreciate all their efforts, and to the extent that Oakwood can continue to be a good regional partner, we will continue to do so. And that concludes our meeting. Our next regular session is going to be on September 16th. We are adjourned three minutes before cable was turning off the lights.